You know, I'll.
Yeah, let's visit first and see how far we get.
Exactly.
Very, I'm still finishing dinner.
Hey, Michelle, I think we have everyone. Chuck and David are not attending, or and Joe's not attending either.
Right, Joe Vius is not not going to attend.
I think Dave Dyer did say he would attend.
Okay.
So maybe he'll hop on in a minute or two. Hi, Dan.
Hi, Michelle, how are you?
All right, not bad.
Glad to hear it.
Mikael, Fred Russo, you want to wait a couple more minutes for Dave? Or we do have a quorum, so we can actually start if you'd like.
I think we can probably get started.
Okay, then, uh.
Let me start recording.
Okay.
Recording in progress.
All right.
We're all set to go. So good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Brerford Planning and Zoning Commission. This is a meeting being held on November twentieth, two thousand five, and it's seven P M. I would like to introduce myself. I'm Fred Russo. I'm the Secretary of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I am substituting for our Chairman Chuck Andrews this evening. I'd also like to introduce members of our Planning and Zoning Commission, and ask each of them to acknowledge their presence as their name is called, uh, Joe Chadwick.
Joe Chadwick is present.
Marcy Pelusi.
Marcy's present.
Sharon Hutner.
Sharon Hutner is here.
Okay, I'm gonna call Dave Dyer. I don't believe he is here, but I'll call him out anyway. Dave? Not here. Um, Joe Vaiuzo, we know is not here, and Chuck Andrews, our chairman is not here, and I'm Fred Russo, and I'm here, so we do have a quorum. I also would like to introduce the, um, members of our Brerford Planning and Zoning Office and ask each of them to acknowledge their presence as the as their name is called. Our Director of Planning and Zoning, Mikael Whackers.
Here.
Our Assistant Town Planner, Dan Robinson.
Here.
Our Recording Secretary, Michelle Martin. Michelle, you're.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Um, you you know, tonight, we're gonna have a, um, some abbreviated, uh, meeting because there are no public notices. Uh, there are no public hearings, so therefore, there are no public notices to be read. And without any public hearings, we don't have to go through the procedure of uh, the rules and regulations of the Zoom meeting and format and stuff like that. So we we're gonna just get into the one and only application that we have to hear, which is listed under, I believe, old business. And that is, um, Lavinia, Mikkel, applicant and owner, one seventy-nine Paulson Road Coastal Site, uh, Plan, Increase Height of Current Retaining Wall, Application Number twenty-four dash four. So, um, I would, if the applicant is here, I believe, yes. How you doing? Uh, feel free to, um, uh, discuss your your application.
Great. So we, as you all know, had, um, an approved plan to put a retaining wall in the backyard that had, um, a maximum height of around three and a half feet um, in largely the same place as a prior existing retaining wall, um, with a slight extension towards the southern side of the property. But we are coming back to you all to ask that we are able to increase the height of the retaining wall, excuse me, the max height of the retaining wall to around five and a half feet on the northern side of the yard. We have, um, uh, obviously, uh, two tiers to the yard, an upper and a lower, and if we have the retaining wall height at three and a half feet maximum, the upper yard is pretty sloped down into the retaining wall, which makes it less useful. Um, and we have three kids and, um, some assorted grandparents were living here, and we would love to have sort of an upper yard that's decently flat and we can use, and then a bottom yard that's decently flat and we could use. Uh, so we are requesting that the, on the northern side of the yard, again, the max height of the wall is about five and a half feet. And then as the wall goes along, uh, the yard towards the southern side, it tapers off, and as it rounds the corner on its final part, it, you know, tapers off to to zero. Um, and I think that sums it up.
Thank you. Um, I I believe, Dan, you did the, uh, the the workup on this particular application, is that correct?
That's right, yeah.
Okay, would you like to, uh, expound on this?
Yes, absolutely. Let me, uh, share my screen here. Okay. Everyone can see, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Larger?
Uh, yeah, let me, I can zoom in a little bit. How about that?
That's good.
Perfect. Okay. So this is at one seventy-nine Paulson Road, uh, within the coastal management zone, so that's why we're looking at it as a coastal site plan. Um, but they did receive a special exception to do grading work in the backyard last year in September twenty twenty-four. So this we're treating as a modification of that special exception, again, to increase the maximum height of the wall, which was two point seven feet, uh, now to five point seven feet. Um, not significantly changing, you know, the nature of that original special exception, so that's why we're able to treat it as a modification of that and hold it to the coastal site plan, uh, standards. Um, and it does, uh, has title wetlands on the northern end of the property, which I'll show you here. That green line, that's the title wetlands flag, and the activity is within one hundred feet, so that's why it triggers, uh, this extra look at it from a coastal perspective. Um, the state did look at the application last year and was, uh, found it to be consistent with the Connecticut Coastal Management Act. We sent it out for comments again this time. Uh, we did not receive word from them. The state has thirty-five days to get, uh, back to us, and if that time elapses and we don't hear word from them, uh, we treat it basically as they are not opposed to it, and we are allowed to proceed without, uh, their comments. Um, so, uh, again, not significantly changing the aspects, um, of the wall that were originally approved. They're changing the height by three and a half feet. I'll zoom in on it so you can see it. The red is the wall there. Um, the maximum height is right around there, five point seven feet. And like Lavinia said, it tapers off as it, uh, crosses into the side yard and, uh, reaches zero feet there. So five point seven feet is the requested maximum height. Um, we did not receive typically retaining walls, uh, that are over three feet. They, uh, they they require engineered plans and construction drawings. We did not receive those from the applicant, uh, in this instance. Um, but since we thought that the change wasn't, uh, egregious, we placed conditions if an approval was given that, uh, those engineered construction plans, uh, are made available to us uh, before an issuance of a building permit, so that the Planning and Zoning, uh, Department still has a chance to look over those plans before any final building approval is granted. Um, with that all being said, um, the staff recommends that the commission approves this with those conditions that the final engineered plans for the wall meet all the applicable standards that are mentioned in our regulations. And that is, that is it from me. If you have any questions, I can certainly, uh, share more about it.
Okay, Dan, thank you. Um, are there any commissioners that would like to, uh, o- open up a discussion? Make comment about the application?
Um, I have a couple of questions. This is Marcy.
Go ahead, Marcy.
Um, I'm just trying to understand, do we know what type of walls being built yet? Is it a concrete wall? Is it a segmental wall? Does it have a footing? Is it a, is it a five foot seven fall height from the high, high level to the low level? Is there a rail?
Actually, I, um, Fred Russo, I I I believe the wall, there's a wall that's existing at the moment. We'll let the applicant add more to this, but I think there's a wall there. They're just gonna increase the height of the wall without beginning, so, but, uh, Ms. Mikkel, if you have more information to add, please do so.
Yeah, sorry, there's not a wall there currently. A, um, dirty slope. Um, the wall is going to be, so we're having an engineer draw up drawings for the wall currently. Um, and the wall is going to be, um, a rock wall um, with potentially some concrete, um, elements to it pending what the engineer says we should do to make it sturdy. Um, and it, uh, as per the stipulations here, it says that it does need a railing or a guard installed at the top of the wall. Um, that is consistent with the building code, so we we will do that for sure. Um, did I answer all your questions?
Um, yeah, I just think in a residential, uh, environment, I would rather see the vertical change happen over two smaller walls, which I wouldn't be opposed to. Like, I totally agree with what you're trying to accomplish with leveling out the backyard and and all that, but I would just consider, you know, and possibly even segmental walls. You could do two three foot six walls, for example, and then you wouldn't have the fall height, and then you could put some native plantings in the bed between, you know, say they're separated by four feet. I wasn't sure what was driving you at the elevation you were starting at.
Yeah.
But, I mean, that that's just a design suggestion. I'm not opposed to what you're trying to accomplish. I just think it needs a little more detail.
Yeah, you know, we we thought about that too, actually, because, um, for the obvious reasons, uh, it does sort of, um, constrict the size of the bottom yard, like, we're trying to get maximum sort of flat. Okay, hold on, sorry. Can you change this per? Um, sorry, uh, so, yeah, we're trying to sort of get maximum flat space on both the upper and the lower. Um, so that's what sort of drove us to this, this versus the tiered options.
I mean, it's, it was just a suggestion.
I appreciate it, thank you. We've been perseverating a little bit too, like, oh.
I mean, I I, you know, it looks like you're following the grade, and a lot of engineers are gonna follow the grade to minimize how much fill you bring in. And I think as long as you're, you know, I'm not sure what the distance is. It looks like you're a hundred feet. I mean, I I think if you're within, if you stay fifty feet off of the title, you're giving it a good separation for, you know, potential sea level rise or what have you to gain yard, and it's a a question of how much fill you're gonna need to have to bring in and cost and and so forth to find, but, you know, I would, you know, I it just, it just, you can tell you have some design to go to get, uh, you know, the result I think that you're envisioning, so.
Is it, Marcy?
I'm not opposed to the project.
Mar- Marcy, thank you. Uh, Scott, thank you for the clarification, by the way. Um, is there, are there any other, uh, commissioners that have a question they may want to ask, or the applicant? Anybody? Nobody? Okay, that's fine. Um, if if there are no more questions, uh, just because, if, again, I'll ask you if you have anything else you want to say. Uh, you know, to summarize it, it's fine. If not, you don't have to, but it's up to you.
Nope, I think I've said it all.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your input. Um, I, so I guess we're just gonna, Mikkel, I, I, it's the only applicant we have here, so maybe we should just vote on this?
Yeah.
Right, it's not a public hearing. We we can act on it.
We act on it right, right now?
If you're, if you guys want to vote on it, we can.
Yeah, I think so. It's the only thing we have on the agenda as far as, uh, uh, you know, an application, so I I will ask someone. Well, I I guess I just would like to make one, one comment myself. I read, I read over the staff report and, um, I was happy to see what it said, and the words that caught my eye were, it was deemed to be in compliance with zoning reg, uh, planning and zoning regulations. It said there was no reply from the C, uh, Connecticut D E P. It said that we recommend the planning and zoning, recommend the coastal site plan, and that was consistent with the goals and policies of the Coastal Area Management Act. So it sounds like, uh, all of the conditions that were placed on the, uh, with, for the applicant to follow, uh, our staff seems to be, uh, in favor of them, so I I I would like to take a vote on this and see if, um, we can get this passed tonight. So, uh, we'll, it will, can we have, uh, a commissioner make a a motion uh, for this, uh, for this application?
Chadwick will make that motion.
And Joe Chadwick makes the motion. We have a second. We have a second for the motion?
Marcy will second. Sorry, I couldn't get my mute off.
Okay, Sharon, uh, uh, will second the motion and we'll go and take a vote. Um, Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick is in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
Sharon?
Sharon Hutner is in favor.
And Fred Russo, I'm in favor as well. So congratulations, uh, it is passed. Um, so the next thing we have is other business. Uh, let me see, no, excuse me, old business. Um, no, we did old business, new business. So Mikkel, what do we have for new business?
Uh, the calendar for two thousand twenty-six, um, as well as.
Is this where I? Many thanks. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it, and I just want to say that, um, uh, Dan Robinson at the town hall was very, um, edifying and helpful along the way. So appreciate that. Fielded a lot of questions in my end that, um, revealed complete lack of understanding of this process. So appreciated, um, happy holidays to you all, and we won't mess up the backyard.
Congratulations.
Happy to help.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna, are we gonna look at that, uh, meet, those meeting dates again, Mikkel?
Yes.
We will have a copy of them. I don't know if there were any conflicts of any, but any of the commissioners, any conflicts with any of the dates.
So I do, I do want to highlight, um, I'm trying to pull it up, but, uh, there are a couple of recommendations for how the schedule can work, and also trying to balance the inland wetlands, uh, calendar, uh, in addition to this. So, reason I can't find the calendar, uh, that was sent out by Michelle, um.
I think I emailed it to you, so if you. Maybe it was. Okay.
That's only one of the appeals.
Okay.
Here's the meeting schedule, except I'm hoping it's a, let me share my screen. I'm not sure if this is the same that you have in front of you. Um, obviously, we put for August, no meeting. And, um, uh, in April, we're recommending, uh, one meeting because of, um, religious holidays. Uh, putting on the ninth, I believe, and then, um, uh, is a, uh, a holiday that we're trying to avoid. Um, and trying only have the twenty-third is probably too much time between nineteenth and the seventh of May. Um, so the sixteenth to sort of interspace that. Uh, July, looking at one meeting as well, trying to stay away from the July fourth holiday. Um, but, um, but trying to space it out between, uh, the end of June and beginning of September. And then one meeting in December. Obviously, as any need arises, we might do special meeting, but I think we can probably manage the business of the co- the commission uh, with this schedule. I didn't, just wanted to get, um, uh, any comments or questions pertaining to this draft, uh, calendar?
Um, Mikiel, I just wanted to ask you about January. Um, it looks like that's, both meetings, I think, are gonna conflict with inland wetlands. Is that okay?
I'm okay with one month to do that. I just don't want to repeat it often.
All right.
I do think we'll need the meetings in January.
All right, so we'll leave them the eighth and the twenty-second.
I mean, the only thing I would be open to is is whether or not it causes confusion is is moving the date to a Wednesday or something. Um, but still have two meetings. And then there's other di- di- different start time. I don't know what that start time would be. I don't want to start at eight o'clock.
Yeah, I agree. We have in the past, but it's not preferable.
So I don't know if there's comments?
Our February fifteenth and, uh, are February fifth and nineteenth the same? Is correct that it's March fifth and nineteenth as well? That just seems.
Yeah, double check.
Yeah, that's because, um, um, February has twenty-eight days.
Okay. I just didn't do the math on it.
No, it's just a duplicate of each other.
Yeah, interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's correct. I just checked it. I'm sure Michelle checked it a dozen times.
We're good.
Yeah, I'm willing to approve just about anything because we will adapt as the volume presents itself.
Or lack of volume?
And I, my goal is really to help manage that and tee up stuff that is ready for you as opposed to having you review stuff that's not ready for you.
Mikkel, Fred Russo, uh, so, uh, can can we just accept the dates, assuming the commission is in favor of the dates as they're stated? Can we just accept these? We don't have to vote on these, do we?
Uh, we do need a vote.
We do.
Yeah.
Okay, well, let me ask, any other commissioners have any questions? Sharon, you have any questions about the dates?
No.
We good? Joe, you mentioned Marcy spoke, so, okay, so. Marcy, go ahead.
It's all good.
Oh, good, okay, good. Then why don't we, why don't we take a vote and, uh, and vote to sing it? So I'll ask, uh, will someone make a motion that we accept the, uh, the new twenty-two, twenty-six meeting dates?
Sharon so moves.
Sharon, uh, makes the motion. Do we have a second?
Chadwick seconds. I'll give it to Marcy.
Marcy, you're gonna get this one. Uh, Marcy seconds it, and we'll take a vote. Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick is in favor.
Marcy Pelusi?
Favor.
Sharon Hutner?
Sharon's in favor.
And Fred Russo's in favor, so that's, that's done. Uh, the next thing we had was, um, oh, we have to do approval of the minutes, that's next. Um, everybody, I'm assuming got a copy of the minutes? And, uh, uh, there were the November sixth minutes, November sixth, uh, and we would need, unless there's any questions of, uh, concerning those minutes, if not, I'll ask just one of our members to make a a motion to approve.
Chadwick will move to approve.
Joe Chadwick moves to approve. Do we have a second?
Marcy a second.
Marcy seconds, and we'll take a vote. Joe Chadwick?
Joe Chadwick is in favor.
Marcy Pelosi?
Marcy's in favor.
Sharon Hutner?
Sharon's in favor.
And Fred Russo's in favor. Okay, so the next thing we have, Mikkel, our correspondence, do you have any?
Uh, we have no correspondence.
Oh, wow.
And I see Michelle shaking her head.
We do have correspondence, or you don't have correspondence?
No correspondence.
All right. Um, other business, we did the, um, the meeting dates. Um, we also have the election of the officers too, I think, on the, uh, that was on the agenda, and I think Sharon, you were in charge of that.
Yeah, I was, yes. I, um, emailed everybody and, um, everybody is happy to maintain the status quo.
Okay, well, that means I'm still the secretary, I guess. Okay, well, thank you very much. Um, I I I don't know i- if there's some other formality, Mikkel, that we have to take. I mean, Chuck's not here.
Michelle, did you, did you get an indication from Chuck about if he wants to hold off or not?
Well, he had said last week that we could take the actual official vote in December. So if that's okay with everybody, maybe we should wait for him.
Yeah, we can do that.
It's nicer than voting him into an office that he's not present.
Yeah, exactly.
He shouldn't be here. So, okay, so we'll just hold out, we'll hold off the actual vote for, um, uh, the the seminar meeting. Uh, the next thing is a planner's report. Mikkel?
Yeah, um, a couple of things real quick, and I'm actually gonna share my screen. It's just two slides, but, um, I met with the first selectman, the new first selectman, had a very positive conversation. Um, put for, put together what was the plan that I've shared with you from the the survey, the zoning, zoning code survey and starting to flesh out and, um, really, um, put this into action for what will be the work of, obviously, my staff, and then that work will come to you when it's ready for any type of policy or regulation changes. Um, and I just, just to give you, uh, uh, an overview uh, really quickly and then sort of set the tone of what you you might be seeing as we sort of, um, I'll try to make this as part of my planner's report so you can get an update of where we're going and and what has been done. Um, so there's, there's six, uh, areas of work, including a seventh, uh, which is sort of the uh, proactive code enforcement. Um, but the six areas of work is, um, deal deals with the coastal management area. We're gonna be doing, reviewing that area as as in how we regulate it. Um, and we're also gonna do an open space strategy plan. Both of those, we've hired Taike Consulting to help with the G I, G I S work. Um, and really, that's sort of our, our, those are two areas of where we're looking to identify and guide what we want to protect. And then after that, or also something in conjunction, um, looking at transit oriented into development, form-based zoning, infill development, redevelopment and housing, and that's really to guide what is developed, you know, where we want to develop it, the look and feel, and how it meets current and future needs. Uh, and then the next slide, which I've been starting to work on and sort of flesh out with the timeframes, what this will look like. I got some feedback from the first selectman. Um, he's eager to have this sort of move forward um, for a variety of reasons. Um, but the the planning initiative process, the public process I'm looking to implement is shown in color along the top. So we're right now in the green phase, so the data collection and G I S work. And we're doing that right now for coastal management, open space strategy, the form-based zoning and the housing. Um, pretty soon, we're gonna start what's the stakeholder engagement, so reaching out to specific people that we feel are have um, information that will be beneficial in terms of informing us in this process. We'll reach out to them directly, have a quick meeting, sort of ask some questions, get their feedback. Uh, based on the data and the stakeholder engagement, and we'll start to work on policy or regulation development. Um, and sort of, and then we, once we get through that, we'll have drafts. And with using the drafts, we'll start to do some focus group feedback to really kick the tires, um, that will inform how we might want to do revisions. And then after we feel like we are in a good position with those revisions, um, we'll bring it for some sort of public hearing or or adoption, um, whatever is warranted based on what we're looking to implement. It might be something that's amended to the plan and conservation development. It might be an actual regulation in the in the, in the zoning regs or in the subdivision regs. It might be an actual regulation in the, in the, in the zoning regs or in the subdivision regs. Um, uh, we'll see what form it takes. But, uh, this is, uh, I had a little bit of a longer timeframe with following the, the meeting with, uh, the new first selectman. Really looking to try and tighten it up into sort of a six-month planning process. I think I have a team that's perfectly capable of doing this. Um, and we have, we're pulling in consultants or experts where needed, uh, in order to, to round out, uh, our, our capacity. So this is just, um, to give you a framework of where we're going and, um, hopefully, the, in the new year, you, there'll be a lot of work that, uh, you can, uh, be informed about as well as participate in.
McKell, Fred Russo, I have a question. I'm just curious, how does it, how is your plan or the plea you're proposing differ from the existing, um, plan of conservation development? It seems like there's a lot of overlap.
There is a lot of overlap. I'm not looking to replace the plan of conservation development. Um, many of the recommendations in there, I'm looking to sort of implement or take it to, you know, those are action-oriented recommendations. I'm looking to act on them.
Good. That's a good plan. Um, anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, this, this is my own selfish, um, interest and probably not within the scope of this. But why does our G I S system not able to deliver a D W G format for things like, um, elevations and mapping? That, that, that just like makes me crazy.
Yeah, um, is it, we're, we've had internal conversations about our G I S system, especially what's available to the public and internal. Um, uh, if that's a service, you're familiar with other communities, we are wondering if it makes sense to sort of revisit who hosts it and, um, want to know what capabilities will be beneficial. So I will definitely pass that along to I T as well as the engineering department, um, because I know we're in conversations about that.
Yeah, I'm not saying it punitive because I have encountered G I S systems that are far less comprehensive than ours. But we have a very comprehensive system. It's just sort of like the cherry on top would be to be able to get a D W G or something that's like translatable into vector format.
No, that's, that's very helpful. I think we want to have, that helps me in that if people can access it, they don't need to bother my staff with trying to get it.
Yeah.
Michelle will be very happy.
True. Dan too.
That's right.
Okay, uh, anybody else have any questions for McKell? If not, um, there's only one thing left, left to do. Uh, before we do, I just want to again, thank everybody for their patience and, uh, and help me, you know, get through these meetings. They're, they're much more difficult than they appear to be. And, uh, I always feel that you can't run a good meeting without a good group of people that, that support you. So once again, I thank you all for your support and, and, uh, and I will ask for someone to make a motion to, uh, during the meeting.
You did great, Fred.
Thank you. Dude, how about a motion?
Make that a motion to Sharon.
Marcy, Marcy makes a motion. A second. Come on, Sharon.
I'll second it.
Sharon second it.
And well done, Fred.
Thank you. Uh, okay, so let's take a vote. Joe Chadwick?
Chadwick is in favor.
Marcy Pelosi?
Marcy's in favor.
Sharon?
Sharon's in favor.
And Fred's in favor. Uh, so, uh, one last thing, um, this is probably one of the shortest meetings we've ever had. Okay, I don't want to get anybody spoiled with this because.
I credit you, Fred.
That's back, uh, we're going to go back to the same old routine. But, uh, again, thank you all for your, uh, your, uh, your support, okay? And all have a good evening and a good holiday.
Happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
I know.
Feel better, Joe.
I know, thank you.
Yeah, feel better, Joe. You sound horrible.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.